Any comments from the board? I have none.
Oh geez, now I can't find the camera.
Well, we have audio but no video tonight.
So be it. Any comments? Nothing. George?
What's that?
Any comments?
No.
Okay. Uh, code enforcement officer, I guess that's still gonna be there forever. Uh, Rob Wilson here. Mary Whitehurst, I assume that's why you're here. We, um, I want to motion that we get a plaque for her as she turns a hundred.
We could either do that, we have those plaques out in the entryway out here. If you were on the right-hand side in the entryway.
Yeah.
They did them for my parents and my grandpa grandparents.
Oh, did you?
Hundred bucks a piece.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
It's just a little plaque.
Yep.
You know, because that let Weston turn a hundred too.
Yep.
You can walk up there if you want.
I'll second that.
And I also would like to do one for, um, Marsh. No, 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 no problem. Um, I would also like to do Marsh's again because that was pretty sad. We gave her a two-dollar frame and a.
Who?
Marsh.
Marsh?
Marsh.
First name and last?
Last name.
First name?
I don't know.
When was that?
That was a while ago. But I never gave it to her because it was pretty pathetic looking.
Hmm.
With the two-dollar plastic frame.
Gee.
I would like to get something decent, I'd say up to a hundred bucks for these ladies, they all spent a lot of time in town. And I think we should do it.
I second that.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So they have it. You also wrote an email us to find out, um, if we do anything else. If, if you know of a party date, I can get the fire department to roll all the trucks by real slow and yell and scream and turn the sirens on and lights and all that if you'd like. We can absolutely do that. But we've done it before and we did a lot during COVID because we couldn't go see anybody, so it was a good way to, to just roll by everybody and appreciate them. Yeah. Yep, so if you'd like to, we, I just need a date and a, you know, a roundabout time and I'll, I'll schedule that and we'll get up there. Okay? You're very welcome. Uh, Ken, I don't know how to say his last name.
Gates.
Uh, Timberdoodle, Free Bay Garage. We've got more information which is great.
What do you name? Sorry.
Mike Peters.
Okay. And you're the builder or you're?
John F. Norrie. This is, the name is, uh, the house is in the name of Michael Ron.
Ah, okay.
John F. Norrie, this is Peter's family.
Okay.
And your name?
Your name is, we thought that we was two business. Chris landed in the town.
Well, it usually is, but last week when I, I have, I have another meeting that I have to be at tomorrow night at the same time, so I had to re, we had to reschedule, so that's why we did it tonight.
Yeah, and I did, I talked to him last week and he just said, well, I don't think I'm gonna make it. Yeah.
Alright, so I believe everything is here that we need now. Um, I don't, I move to approve it. I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Um, Carol, you in tomorrow? I thought you weren't gonna be in today.
I was not, I just went in for half an hour to get the stuff from Kara and do a couple things, so I was just there.
Are you in tomorrow?
I'm in tomorrow, yeah.
So if you want, you can pick up your permit tomorrow with her. Either or.
Is that figured out that, is that the same amount?
Yes, twelve hundred, yes, twelve hundred square feet. Um, with the garages, ten cents a square foot, I think, twelve hundred square feet. Yeah. So whatever that comes out to be.
Ten cents.
Cash or?
I think it's ten cents a square, it's either ten or fifteen, but I think the garage is, is ten. But I don't have the.
I know you calculated it before. I still haven't got Will's signature though, so, cause it's just something that won't happen, so.
Depending, depending their, uh, boy, actually, he's already signed off on this.
But they can, they can build it.
Yeah.
He still has to approve it.
Right. He still has to inspect it.
Right.
Um, garage, fifteen cents, one thousand eight square footage for one fifty, one twenty is what was calculated before, is that?
I did one thousand eight.
One thousand eight?
I think it's twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve hundred square feet.
Thirty by forty.
So, so it's changed, okay, so twelve hundred square feet?
Times fifteen, you said?
Twelve hundred for the garage.
Hundred and eighty dollars.
Yep.
Is there an apartment or something are gonna be on?
No, it's unfinished, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, a hundred and eighty bucks, cash or check? Hundred and eighty.
Eighty, one eight zero. No problem, that's mine. You don't, you don't need that.
Yeah, I won't have the.
See Carol tomorrow down the office? And she can give you all the paperwork and all the stuff that you'll need.
Who should I call when it's ready?
Two four five, two seven zero, four eight two five, Lisa. Um, I don't hear, I have to drive it to Carmel, but we can, we can send somebody by to pick it up.
Yeah, that's fine.
The payment and the check.
Okay, but still call this number?
Yep.
I know, it's a very, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Also, it's still a little weird.
Yep.
Yep.
Welcome to town. Thank you. I'm glad you did too. Yep. Where are you from? Oh.
Oh, it's all on this one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, it's kind of a museum. Well, it's so. And they said, we're doing this, we're all on the muscle on the base and feed the soldiers, probably the ones who runs there. And they said, we'll be between three weeks. We close the restaurant, put up a sign, we back between three weeks, we never wheel into the public, we don't use.
Wow.
Why don't they just feed military? But we didn't.
Is that right?
But we know that it was, it's something greater than a call call from Iraq and Afghanistan, they just called it Sam.
Yeah.
They'll never forget, the soldiers just, they, it was like a big thing.
Yeah.
It really was.
Good for you.
So, I, we missed that, but it's good to be here, but I remember that. While chill if we ever needed, and we do something that I agree to help the town. I've got an old GPW tent included, it's big. And I've got all the poles for it, I've got all the stuff here, but it takes probably five or six guys to set this thing up.
Okay.
And tent folded up, rolled up like a Swiss roll, is probably new to you.
Yep.
It's, it's a big tent. Probably about seven years.
Wow, okay.
I've never seen it, it's a big, so one thing, if you think the town could use it, and if they had a place to store it, because you require them, and maybe one's here to set it up.
Right.
Then.
And we have a tent we actually use now, it's a thirty by thirty and we set it up a couple times a year for people that wanna use it, and we set it up out here for harvest festival in September.
Keep it in mind, if you talk to the other groups, if, if, you know, because I know all the way beyond, you know, if there was somebody who knew this. And, you know, and I just, and it's, it's pretty nice, you know, having to be around.
Yep.
So keep it in mind, then send a truck up to get it set up.
Okay. I'll talk to the chief and I'll get, I'll get, I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate your, your, your.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you. Take care.
So.
Well, this is a tough one.
Review town hall waiver requests, Sophia Kinney.
This is not definite, it's just.
Wife?
Yeah, it's just, uh, she's looking at options, but she hasn't filled out an application yet. But it's a, it's a lot, but, um, at the time she asked me, all those dates were available, I just needed to.
Um, the only thing I think we're gonna have, the only thing I think we're gonna have issues with is storing
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anything in here because we have our drama club, the Temple Drama Club
Right.
here as well with their stage and their setup. Um, if they can work with them and work something out, I don't have a problem with it, if not, they're gonna have to take it to and fro. Um, but as long as they're, um.
The only problem I'd have is if they use it and they clean up afterwards.
Yeah, they're using up a lot of days, that's gonna make this unavailable, but if they're open, fine.
Yeah, well, it's for a bunch of, uh, kids, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, well, she says students, but. Can we find out, uh, an age group? Carol?
Yeah.
From her, I mean, I still have no issue with it, but. If she can, um.
Yeah, she's gonna fill out the form and, like I say, she hasn't really committed yet, but.
If we tell her two times a month, um, that would probably be better than the whole month of this and the whole month of that. And if she wants to do a, a show for anybody, she's gonna have to get with the drama club and find out when they do this, because this should be coming pretty soon.
Yep.
Okay.
But I have no problem.
When does the town begin? They during the day?
Town band is Monday nights.
Yeah.
Monday nights, yeah.
Right, they don't overlap. Okey-dokey.
Okay, accept committee resignation, Russell Wilson, evidently we, uh, read set him for conservation commission and he wanted to, uh, give his resignation.
He did say yes, and then he said, never mind.
Yeah, changed his mind.
Oh, okay.
What do you, he?
Too much other stuff going on or something like that.
Yeah, so he's gonna resign.
Yes.
I move that we accept Russell Wilson's resignation.
I will second that, thank him for his service
Mm-hmm.
to that committee. He just got appointed.
Yep.
Uh, review and approve veteran, veteran credit.
Charlton, you didn't take Keith Woods off.
And I didn't get anything official, they just told me that Keith was not re-upping.
Well, Keith from, uh, CAC.
Yeah. If his term ran out, we don't have to do anything.
What?
Was he appointed for a term or was he just, is, is that one of those?
His term was just up.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything. Yeah, we don't have to do anything.
Prove veterans credit, total disability for Lana Cook. Uh, according to Evan, the taxpayer meets all statutory requirements to qualify for the veteran's tax credit. Additionally, while the tax credit did not check off the veteran's tax credit, RSA seventy-two, semi-colon twenty-eight, I would recommend they do so, so can we get her to do that? Although it's checked off on here.
I checked it off.
Can you get them to come in and initial it? It's a total of twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, so I move we, uh, accept the application.
Stamp George.
Pending.
It went upside down. Yeah, but you're not even on the right page.
Anybody seconding that?
Second. Today's date, twentieth, twenty-third, twenty-first?
Twenty-first, yeah.
Lucas Foundation's charitable exemption application, and this is something that they're supposed to do every year.
Yep.
And I would make the motion to, uh, do this as general paperwork for and housekeeping for the town.
Okay.
Any second?
Second.
Third, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So these don't have to come to a meeting anymore, they can just be done it.
Okay, we'll see if I remember that in a year.
Okay.
Um, you done with?
Yeah.
I need that warrant.
Warrant thing.
It's, I put it right there, just disappeared.
I just gave it to.
I dummy the warrant for Elizabeth.
Oh, which one is it?
Bill, did you, uh, George, do you want to look at the warrant from Elizabeth with delinquent taxpayers or?
But I've signed that.
There's nothing to sign, it's just an FYI.
Just looking, okay.
Uh, review, New England Forestry Foundation charitable property tax exemption, they do this every year, every year we say no. And every year Evan says to deny it because they do not live or use.
Motion to deny.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Review property abatement, ve- veterans credit and elderly credit application, bro- bro- Roger? No.
Denied.
Yeah, it's, uh, denied again by, it's because of the, the way they put his here with local trust.
Oh, right, yep.
I mean, you know, in so many ways, I do wanna see if we can do something, but according to Evan too, and maybe we can ask Evan this. Can we give him the veterans credit? I mean.
Well, it's the same thing for all these things, he just does not qualify, and I don't know if the DRA, they would have a problem with that or?
Well, can we, can we find out?
Well, I think he's.
We can probably find out from legal, because it is.
I think he earns seventy-four thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but the problem is the stuff's in this trust.
Right, that, that would be for the, uh.
According, according to state law, that's not, that doesn't qualify. So we can find out, we can see what Evan has to say.
No, I know, we asked before and he said no, so it's just a matter, do you guys have the authority to override him? That's the question.
That's, that's the question I'd like to be, I'd like to ask.
Yeah, and if he doesn't know, we'll ask legal. That's the case for all three of these?
Um, no, his, his is the only one.
Okay.
Yeah, him is the only one, I mean, he doesn't qualify for the the low-income credit because he's making much money in his pension.
Yep.
Um, and I just wish there was some way we could.
Oh, you wanna waive the law tariff?
Well, I wanna give him the, the tax credit if we can, but I wanna do it legally, I can't do it illegally. So I mean, if there's a possible way we can do it, then.
The thing is, is there's several other people that have irrevocable trusts, they're like, I have to take away a solo credit from one and there's just, they don't qualify and I'm taking it away from others and then is it gonna? Are people gonna say, you know, you let this one and I?
Well, that's the problem, the, the trusts are the ones that have to pay the taxes and they're not the veterans, there are just this trust out there, so.
Right.
Yeah. Well, find out, see if Evan has any, any possible workaround.
Yeah, just asked a question and if not, we can send it to legal.
Mm-hmm.
See if there's, uh, some way they know if we can try and help out. Uh, next up is review property abatement request, Nancy Ellis.
I'm moving to, you know, approve the uh, abatement of three hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-eight cents, Nancy Ellis.
And I'll second that. And that was okay by Evan.
Okay.
Or paperwork was done by Evan.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Notice of abatement Sally Mann. Two twenty-two North Road. Same situation, same thing, Evan signed off on it, an abatement for her as well.
Four thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
Hmm. I move we give her the abatement, approve the abatement.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, we're cooking right along here.
Uh, yes, you can review.
You guys have to sign those, so here's the other one, here's the one you just approved.
Oh.
Gotcha.
George, you keep doing it upside down.
Yeah.
Me too. I mean, then.
Hey. Approved out, uh, review L U C T Van Beek. Sixty-eight Hill Road, evidently they took some portion of it out of current use.
Yep.
So they have to pay ten thousand.
They do.
Yes, they do.
Two places, two papers to sign on that one.
Again, is this something that we need to make a motion and
or is it signing?
And do, or can it be just part of
paperwork?
Tax collecting. We do, so move.
Wow. What, is that it? You go ahead and approve it.
I love it's here. Yeah, we can approve this one now, but.
Yeah, I'll second George.
Did you sign both places?
Both places.
Was it?
You did.
The one on the show, oh, that was different.
Yes. Those were, they were the top ones. Jeez.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know why we have to bring these things to us for this, when it can just be done by the tax collector.
Yeah, we just have to sign one on them, is all we have to do. There's that one.
And then we got, uh, minutes, minutess, for April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Be a third group. I've got a couple of issues.
Okay.
As usual. Um, under CIP committee, fourth line down, it says Fisk added that Perry's request is a mistake.
Um, he did say that.
He did, but that's their opinion, so I want in their opinion. But it is up to the select board.
Fisk added that in his opinion Perry's request was a mistake?
Yeah.
Fisk added that Perry's request is a mistake in his opinion. But it is up to the select board.
Okay.
Um, I guess I didn't get a second on that.
Nope.
We don't need a second on that.
Yeah.
Um, under Holt Lane. I would just like to add something in there that says, uh, uh, with notification that the road may be abandoned by the town, because we did tell them that and it's not in there anywhere.
Yep.
Um, we would definitely take care of the thousand dollars and they could pave the road on their, at their expense, but.
With notification that the road may be abandoned.
Abandoned by the town.
But when the town abandons the road, they still retain ownership.
Yeah, it's, it's on his property, yeah, he could, he could maintain ownership of it.
No, the town.
We would just, we would just stop plowing it and stop maintaining it.
Well, if the town abandoned a lot of classic roads.
Yeah.
But they still are owned by the town.
Right. And it would still be the same kind of thing.
Still gonna be owned by the town, but they are allowed to maintain it.
Right.
Right, so, uh, the town would stop maintaining the road, how's that?
Just for plowing or for, I thought?
Notification that the town would stop maintaining anything on the road. Uh, make, stop maintaining the road, which means not of plowing.
Because Kent tried to get rid of those.
Yep, he wanted to.
Dead end driveways.
Yes. Uh, and I think he still has, um, he's still working on a way to do it next year, but I just don't wanna put the thousand dollars and have them pave it all the way up there and then we turn around behind their back and tell them, I wanted it
Right.
put right out there, and that's what I did to Tim. I said, as long as you acknowledge and make sure that he knows, we may.
Right.
We may stop working on that road. And then last is, uh, Shaw. Belt right at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, George, can make a motion as amended.
Move to approve, and then it says amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, um, committee reports?
One quick one, recycling. Uh, met with them last week. They have about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in their revolving fund, so they're gonna be spending a significant chunk of it. Where, where the dumpsters are where you put the trash, the landfill stuff in, the concrete wall is crumbling.
Uh.
And that's what holds up the building, so they've gotta replace that concrete wall.
Which walls?
It's, um.
Basically.
It's, it's at the far end of, of the dump, where the metal, there's a
Oh.
place for metal, it's the two where you dump your landfill in.
Well, I don't think we did that much.
Hmm, no, I don't think so, it's old.
We did some of it down here.
And part of it is people backed into it and cracked it. And the whole building's gonna come down if they don't fix it. Uh, the bid came in a lot higher than they thought it was going to, but they've got the money to cover it, and that was basically it.
People from Driftin' One Time, when they put their foundations on, they wanted all fired, getting against plants. I says, well, if you wanna do that, you gotta go back to the, uh, people that named the concrete.
Okay.
And also you might wanna go back to the guy that dug the, dug the hole, because some of these guys dig holes and maybe bottom. We did one down, I can remember. That they, it looked like a nice little lot, we put in the foundation and a couple years later, we had to go back. The chimney side, it was all cracking and settling. Going and dug it back out and found the pine trees and everything.
Oh, gosh.
Big time to all of us.
Yeah, okay.
You guys read that thing about this, you know, signing up the, our names on that petition thing, the
Oh, yeah.
Court thing, like, I, I've sent you guys a couple of emails that have come in, but I don't know, are you doing, do anything about it?
Petition thing for what?
So it's a one saying, basically, it's been signed by a bunch of towns, including Peterborough and maybe Dublin, I think. Um, it basically, it's a letter to the state saying, how about you guys pay your fair share of the school money instead of passing it all off onto the towns? Um, I don't have any problem signing it.
Well, we should, um, let's throw out the tax problem that we have.
Yeah.
The school board, when we meet with the SAC committee, they want all the select boards to sign this up.
Yeah.
Do you wanna sign it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know if that's actually a letter, that's just information, um.
Well, you can tell. Well, you can tell them we'll we'll sign it. We done?
Yep, nope.
Just one more thing, I sent you the quotes for the, um, the treaty, were we supposed to do something about that now?
Seven thousand bucks?
We're not supposed to do anything with that now, that's that's Kent's problem and we told him we didn't have the money for it and. It was either gonna go on next year unless it becomes a safety hazard.
Right.
And we have to take it down, we're not doing anything with it this year. I mean, if we if we vote. To take it out of the monies that he has there, for the ones on his property, but we can't do that for over there.
Right. So it needs to be in the budget for next year.
So it either needs to be in the budget for next year or it needs a warrant for next year.
Yeah.
Uh, police board, um, not a whole lot. Um, he did go over some calls that were. Um, much more impressive than the ones he put in our.
Yeah.
Town, uh, report. And it seems like there's quite a few, uh, sex offenders rolling around town.
Down Greenville, not not.
It is, this.
Round town in Greenville?
Yeah, don't put that in minutes.
Yeah.
It's a great, it didn't even include us to write.
Okay.
These are all the people, the county S, Tamworth, Troy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll probably just add us in here if if it's.
Yeah, I think that's just letting us know, uh, everybody that has signed it to date and. Case that affects your decision.
Well, we decided, so just let them, ask them what we're supposed to do now. We done now?
Yeah, most of you are adjourned.
Second.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Good night, thank you.